All right, we'll call to order this Town of Weddington regular planning meeting Monday, November the 17th, 2025, 7:00 PM. We have a determination of quorum, as I see everyone is present. And I'm going to read our conflict of interest statement. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters on the agenda? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the matter involved. Good, Bill?
Nope.
Good?
Good.
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 All is good. All right, moving on. Do we get a motion for approval of minutes for October the 27th regular planning board meeting?
Motion to move approved minutes of October 27th regular planning board.
Get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, that was done. Moving to public comments. Individuals are allowed three minutes to speak and must only comment on current agenda items. A maximum of 30 minutes is allocated to the public comment period. The time limit may be extended at the discretion of the chairman. I see we have no speakers, so we'll move through that one. Number six, old business. Discussion and possible recommendation of D 917 text changes as proposed from workshop. Greg, you want to give a little touch up on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. As a light refresher, the section D 917 is our requirements basically for new developments in the Town of Weddington. D 917A being applicable to everyone. D 917B applicable only to conservation development. So on and so forth, we've created a D 917E, which is additional requirements for major subdivisions or kind of conventional subdivisions. Very broadly speaking, our intention in tweaking this code section is to discuss how to better differentiate and preserve buildable versus unbuildable lands. We discussed this at our regular meeting on October 27th, and we actually had a workshop on this earlier this month to discuss this D 917 section. We mainly talked about D 917E, but it broadly applies to this entire section of code, so we have it listed on the agenda. It's just D 917. When we met that Thursday, we agreed to amend these kind of text changes. I basically left immediately after that, and so members of our board graciously kind of took up that topic and took the ball from where we were with our planning workshop. Special thanks to Bill for providing attachments and additional exhibits for our context. I would also like to note that our new permit technician and planning assistant Jaslyn, she also took up this topic at that time period between the workshop and today and provided some examples as well, which we have in the slides. But with that, I would just introduce the topic to the board at large and to the public who's attending our regular meeting, who may have missed our workshop, where we are with the status of this. I have some slides just for reference that we can go back and forth on. You know, this will be hard to read if you're not referencing your packet, but this is what Bill has provided to y'all as far as some text amendments. This is what we had talked about prior to the workshop, so it's very similar, but there are some important tweaks here. And then we have some visual exhibits as well as actual appendix changes that Jaslyn has proposed, and when the time comes, we'll have her speak on those items. But just introducing that topic of our buildable versus unbuildable land discussion as a text amendment to section D 917.
Awesome.
With that, yeah, I'll leave it to Bill and/or Jaslyn. I think we'll have Bill go first, but then I do specifically want to give Jaslyn her opportunity to not only introduce herself to the public and this board, but to provide her proposed changes as well, because I think they're great.
Great, great, great. All right, Bill, you want to start with your?
I don't have a whole lot. When we talked about it last week, we were trying to, at least when I first presented, I was trying to make them run parallel and very similar. And then after a lot of, lot of discussion, we thought, well, Greg, what do you think? Greg says, well, now when a builder comes in, he's either going to do this one or this one. And so trying to make them run parallel wasn't, he felt, and I tend to agree with him now from what he said, was not that critical. So basically, what you see here is when we're talking about conservation residential, we're using, instead of net acreage, and I think at the workshop, we were pretty much on board, using adjusted tract acreage. That's basically taking out the non-buildable. And then we talked about secondary conservation, which would be the other land. Make it simple, you cut it in half, you can build on that half, the other stays where it is. We had some discussion on the priority of secondary, and we talked about, well, should we have a priority for primary? And we basically said, well, primary doesn't have a priority, it's not buildable. So we went to secondary. I did send a note out, and I don't know whether it went to the whole board or whether it just went to staff, where you go into the definitions for steep slopes, it says 15%. Every place else in the UDO, it says 25%. So I'm making the assumption that 15% was a typo, and it should be 25 everywhere. And if that's the case in the agreement, I think that's just an administrative change. And that was pretty much it. We talked about conservation lands. I think Steve was saying, well, we need a definition of primary and secondary. So that's in there. There is some discussion Steve may want to bring up about view shed, where it belongs and what it is. And that was pretty much it. Well, that's kind of a summary of where we were, and because we didn't want to really take any real action until we had the full planning board here, that's where we were.
If I may, you know, some of the changes that our packet has versus our initial discussion is, you know, this is the original text, it talks about prioritizing conservation lands. We noted that, you know, if we're denoting primary conservation lands, there's no priority, that's area we don't want to build on. So this section doesn't really apply, and so it's more correctly labeled here as the priority of the secondary conservation lands. We have, you know, again, our definition of primary conservation lands rather than talking about their traits. And then just some additional information about definitions and specifically defining primary open space. So that's kind of our key takeaway of this discussion, is we're saying there's something called primary open space, it's like conservation lands, but it applies in subdivisions regardless. This is area that we don't want to build on, this is area that we want developers to specifically label and set aside to show that this is area that's not suitable for development. So if you take, let's say, a 100-acre tract and like against some wetlands, this is, this is, they're never going to build on anyway, so we're not necessarily going to give them credit for it, but we want them to denote those areas as being sensitive and give them credit basically for preserving that land. And does that, denoting them as primary conservation lands or primary open space in this case, and then discussing these open space areas. I think this is a good transition for Jaslyn to speak, because she's provided some exhibits here. They're not in your packet, but they were provided while I was away, and so I got those today that show kind of some visual exhibits.
You got enough for exhibits? Are they all the same?
Each one's a set, I think.
Yeah. Three sets, sorry. So, hi, my name is Jaslyn, I'm the permit technician, and currently in the UDO, there is not a checklist for the sketch plan for conservation residential developments, there's the schematic plan for conventional residential development, but not for conservation. So I thought to go alongside the potential text amendment changes to D 917, that we could also include maybe another appendix, like an appendix 2D that has a checklist for everything that you need for the requirements for open space that go alongside the sketch plan that's required for RCD developments. And it has clear definitions of what is required for primary open space and adjusted tract acreage yield with the calculations of how to calculate adjusted tract acreage yield, and then also how it should be displayed as a part of the sketch plan, and potentially having a visual aid to how it should be displayed for all of the different requirements. Because right now, it's kind of like all the requirements are scattered across the UDO, so having it in a consolidated place, yes.
Jaslyn, if we have questions, should we wait till the end or ask them as you're going?
You can ask now.
I just have one question, that is, we talk about sketch plan, and in the past, with exhibit 2B, we moved away from sketch plan and went to the term schematic plan because it had more specific definition requirements for a developer. So I'm not sure how that plays in here, so it's just a question.
I think sketch plan meaning the plan required for conservation RCD.
Basically, your pre-application site plan, so what we're looking at.
Oh, pre-application.
You know, before we have a public vote, so we had talked about before, that kind of during the shret and site walk, you know, at the application phase, we'd like these areas designated more clearly, so that, you know, even when we're out doing the site walk of the property, we know that the primary lands are designated over here. So this is kind of a earlier checklist for them, that when they get the project started, hey, you know, here's the raw land, we're setting aside this area versus this area, and here's the visuals. And so she's provided this kind of sketch plan, open space requirement example. So basically, the kind of the yield plan stage of showing these areas being designated, and then there is a reference to the schematic plan, the document that you guys would vote on here in this appendix 2B. We would supplement appendix 2B item B 25 by saying the percentage of open space required and provided, and then further defines, you know, the expectations of what that open space plan shows.
And then the visual example also has some numbers that further show the calculations that adjusted tract acreage yield is the gross acreage minus the primary open space or primary conservation lands, whoever you guys want to name it, but.
I think the visuals are great. The only thing I would say is, just looking at this tonight for the first time, probably would like to have some time to really look at it.
Absolutely.
One thing, just want to make sure, that I thought from the other meeting, that, and it's not even really this, I think it's in both parts of this and what Bill had done. I thought in RCD, we wanted to be the term primary conservation, and then primary open space to be utilized in our regular subdivision.
Traditional.
Yeah, so whereas like 2D has the primary open space, that would be conservation in this situation for this little checklist. And the same in, I believe in 917B to Bill's, I think we want, did I not see open space somewhere in there?
We talked about.
No, it's good there, I guess I saw it somewhere, but.
Primary opens, basically.
A lot of iterations floating around.
Yes. Yeah, if you're doing, if you're doing a conservation subdivision, we refer to primary conservation, secondary conservation. If you're doing a conventional subdivision, that's where we started using primary open space, which to me is the equivalent of primary conservation. And then, I don't know whether we said secondary open space or we just said open space.
No, in RCD, it would be conservation, correct?
For RCD.
Conservation area.
Yeah, so in this, just in this little checklist, which she's on it, a checklist for them.
I'm with you.
To find somewhere to go, but primary open space, secondary open space would be conservation in this situation.
Oh, I, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Rest of this is all supportive, so now they know, basically, here's the, here's the guide for them to start, and they're going to get something, then they're going to show Greg easily their exhibit shows, we're going to have to denote it to where it's not, you know, we're not sitting here going, where is this, where is that? And the same for when they show up at the first kind of conceptual meeting for everybody, correct?
Yes.
Kind of the guidelines for.
Our two objectives here are clear definitions and deliverables to you guys. So clear definition of what these primary lands are. The issue that we were coming to before is that we're kind of using conservation lands very broadly, when to truly be conservation property is something that you're deeding over and protecting perpetuity, so we don't want to use that too loosely. So that's why we came up with that primary open space definition as well. And, you know, secondly, we want it deliverable, so we need exhibits or visuals like this to say, this is what we're looking for, and if you don't have this kind of exhibit when you get to the site walk and specifically the planning board, then you're not really clearly showing the area that we want set aside, and we're going to have a lot of questions, we might have to table your project because you're not showing it clear enough.
Yes, but great job, I'm all for this, just want to make sure we're using those terms.
Yeah, I can be changed to primary and secondary conservation lands, yeah.
Got it, good job. Having said that, however, because we do have a bit of a parallel path, do we want to have this also laid out for conventional, so that they have the checklist and understand, you know, open space and?
Well, my idea was that there is kind of already a checklist for the schematic plan, so that we could just beef up the schematic plan a little more for conventional. So on the second part over here, it would just have an amendment adding more information about primary open space or primary conservation land.
I think what I liked, and at least it clarifies me for me, Greg, when you called it a pre-application. So I think there's been a lot of, I'll say confusion and uncertainty around the term sketch, so I don't know whether we call it pre-application plan or something, and maybe it's just me that we wrestled so much with sketch plan and schematic plan several months back.
Yeah, I don't think this is replacing it, I think this is just a step before.
Yeah.
And almost using sketch in the appropriate place.
Correct, that's what I was going to say, I don't know that, I don't know that you, I don't know if using schematic plan as our end means we can't use sketch plan, although we're trying to not have some of our work.
Yeah, and again, this is for conservation, not the regular conventional, correct?
The exhibit and then the checklist is for conservation, the schematic plan amendment would be for conventional. And if you would like an exhibit for conventional, I could also make an exhibit that shows the overlap between primary open space and the open space requirement percentage as well, if that would be also helpful.
Yeah, I mean, we're going less than two weeks from the last time we talked about this to now. There's no rush to try to get this as a button-up text amendment. I think we're all just trying to be very deliberate about, yeah, we moved to the term schematic, but we still have to reference sketch sometimes.
Yes.
We're referencing open space, but it applies to two different types of RCD subdivisions that you could do, it's all very complex, and you're trying to simplify it.
I think, I think this is great. Again, as long as we're using, making sure terminology, other than that, I think this is.
Yeah, I'd just like to look at it and give us some time to look at it, you know.
Yep, yep.
One question I, one question I do have with regard to the delineation between conservation land and open space. When we look at conservation land and RCD development, that is deeded conservation land in perpetuity.
Correct.
But how's open space delineated in perpetuity? Where does it delineate that as being?
It's lands owned by the HOA, but they don't necessarily have to preserve it, or they don't necessarily have to keep the trees up, or they don't have to leave it in a natural state.
So if it was just HOA open space, we can turn a picnic shelter on it, they'd have, they could amenitize it more so, the conservation land is set aside.
Yeah, conservation is conservation land, so RCD, everything that is designated, all that additional space is designated as conservation land. In R 40, according to this, with the open space, you have conservation land, it would be anything delineated, those wetlands by the Corps of Engineers, or in that, in that space, that would always be.
Not very open space.
That would be, but it would still be conserved because the Corps is not going to let you build on that.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be deeded as conservation. It would just be bylaws of HLA as open space.
So my question is, are we defeating, are we defeating the purpose by not requiring that to be held in perpetuity as undevelopable land?
There is, there is in the UDO, whether it's referring to conservation land or open space, that it's in perpetuity, because a question came up, someone wanted to know if they could buy the open space by their house, whatever, and it says it can only be done with 100% approval of all of the HOA members and 100% approval of the mayor and town council.
I'll give another example, like an actual wedding example. We have numerous subdivisions that are trying to close out their bonds, the developers trying to, the builder trying to leave and transfer management over to the HOA, basically the residents of the subdivision. And these ideas of kind of their neighborhood green or these open spaces that they can use versus the areas that are trees that they can't use has been kind of a sticking point in terms of their, their funds, how much money they have set aside for each year for maintenance. And so we're trying to clarify that as well, is that, you know, just because a floodplain is in open space and it's not deeded in perpetuity to some, you know, conservation organization, doesn't mean you can build on it, doesn't mean you can build a house on it, doesn't mean it's, it's not your maintenance responsibility. And so those are some of the things we're trying to clear up too. So for your point, Rusty, you know, we're trying to use this primary open space label to show these prime, these ecologically sensitive or important lands regardless of the subdivision type. So it may not be a conservation land that's shown on a deed or shown on the final plat, but these are areas that the developers clearly shown up front that not only should they not build on, but they can't build on. And so we're trying to get a kind of deliverable map that says this back areas floodplains, we're not trying to get credit for that, we're not saying that's anybody's backyard, we're saying we have to put this in at the bare minimum HOA common open space, so nobody builds on it, nobody disturbs it.
Yeah, I think that the primary open space definition that we have here is really not, really not adequate. Primary open space in a conventional subdivision is going to be the same as the, you know, the definition wise or the technical part of it is going to be the same as primary conservation land in an RCD subdivision. So definition that's in here means a portion of the tract set aside in conventional developments for permanent and perpetual protection as required by the UDO. It doesn't really tell me what it is, this, it just says it's in the UDO somewhere.
If you go to the section on the, on the UDO, which is section DO 4C and D, it's page 33 on my hard copy, but, you know, the difference between this hard copy and electronic, that's what I was referencing.
Because it's the same, it's really the same land. It's bad land, and it's gotten, it can't be built on.
So in the, kind of the open space definition above the primary, kind of spells out all of the open space, then it goes one step further with primary open space means basically the portion set aside in conventional development. The top more is permanent and perpetual in conservation.
The top is what it can be used as, right?
The open space.
Pretty much, the open space.
Means the land area, water features, enhances.
That's just open space, right? But the primary open space is what we're going to say you can't build on, and we're going to, we're going to minus that from your yield. So it really has the same definition as the primary conservation lands, which is, it's going to be submerged land, floodplain, steep slopes way than 25%.
But primary conservation.
Oh, no, no, I get what you're saying, basically copy and paste, basically the same definition to a degree, just call it primary open space and conventional.
Right.
Well, I got, okay, I got you.
Now you know exactly what you have to pull out of your yield.
You could even have the existing definition that's provided here by Bill, but just say, similar in reference to 917BE, primary conservation land, or something to that effect.
Yeah, because I think, I think what you said last time was what you said, and then add that one sentence saying it can never be built on, which is what Bill did without, without doing the first part. So if we, if we take the definition of primary conservation land, move it to primary open space, and then add the sentence that also means that the portion of the tract set aside for, in conventional development for permanent and perpetual protection as required by this UDO, I think that's what we're after.
Right, but now, we just got to be careful, this, what we're saying is that it can't be built on, but are we going to say that we can't do anything else on it?
Well, I'm sitting here looking at, I'm looking at definition right now, it says mailboxes, you know, platefills, you can't do that on conservation land, so.
Correct, I don't want to say in conventional that we would use the word it can't be built on, because somebody could probably put a shelter.
Right, right, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
They want, if there was flat enough land, you might want to put some picnic table or something like that over there. So conservation land, that would be a no, right? But in a.
A conservation land, you could put, secondary conservation land, you could put a picnic table.
Right, secondary, but we're really talking about primary right now.
Oh, on the open space?
Table, not necessarily like a picnic shelter.
Shelter, yeah, so.
It's to remain in its natural state.
I just want to get it as clear as possible.
So no, I think you're right, I think it's just, I don't even want to say I would put anything to build on, I almost think it's just a copy and paste of.
We're just calling it open space as far as conventional.
In this, yes.
Something. So they know exactly what they have to pull out of the yield when they want to do their yield.
But, okay, when we talked last time, conservation land, it comes out as you're doing the yield plan, yield plan calculation, that's it. Open space, if, if you've got 20% primary open space, that will count towards the 20% open space you need in total.
Correct.
Yes, so.
And if you had.
Where it does not, where you got, where we've xed out in D 17B on conservation, that not more than 50%, well, it says zero, but I think it was not more than 50% of the minimum required area of conservation shall be comprised of wetlands, I thought that was secondary, yeah, for secondary land. We pulled that out of conventional, so that there is no, whatever we pull in primary open space is also credited to there.
Correct.
It's not.
But, but not for conservation.
Correct.
And if.
What meant to be for conservation.
Right, so if I've got a situation where I've got 25% primary open space, unbuildable, I'm required to have a minimum of 20, well, that other 5%, that's just, you lose that.
That's right.
Yeah.
But, so, so primary open space is the, is the non-buildable portion for Weddington. And if it's only 10% of the 20% that they need, then the other 10% is open space.
That's right.
That's where you get into the open space, which can have the. That's where you get into the open space, which can have the cluster.
I mean, to me, primary open space for conventional is the same thing as primary conservation for RCD.
I'd almost read as primary open space is extreme limitations, streams, valleys, swells, submerged, submerged land, floodplains, steep slopes greater than twenty-five percent and other low line, lowland areas. Uh, I don't know, we need to say unbuiltable or not buildable, but.
No, we don't, I don't think we need to say that. We just copy the same definition as.
I've been, I've been trying to avoid that unbuiltable designation for the.
It'll be consistent. They'll, they'll see the same thing on both.
So you're still going to have, you still have, you still have primary open space in RCD.
You can still have other open space. If they give more than what was required to be in conservation, that just becomes.
Because, you know, with this being entrances and that sort of thing in a, in an RCD, you still have that same open space. Designation.
You gotta have a minimum of twenty. If you've got twenty-five as primary, you've met your twenty. If you've got ten as primary, you gotta come up with another ten.
Yeah, I, I think that taking a bunch of steps back, that's really what we're trying to portray here. It's like, if you want to build in Weddington, you either have to have twenty percent or fifty percent of this land set aside as not a building pad.
Private property.
Yeah, that's not private property. So that's a significant challenge.
Right.
Your pro forma has to make that make sense and you have to do the work upfront for that to be shown as worthwhile endeavor for us as well. So.
And that's fifty percent of the adjusted tract acreage because you're taking out the, okay.
So we're setting the expectation upfront, like guys, this is going to be tough for you to build this in Weddington, but here's the rules. They're clear. We all have an understanding what they are and these are deliverables. We're trying to get to you. You know, we've got uh, Jaslin's, uh, kind of exhibit here, which I think I heard from folks that we kind of want a primary open space example of that as well. So it applies to any type of subdivision and then. And then we've got, uh, Bill's exhibit here that was in your packet, uh, that shows that as well. Um, to how that could potentially be set aside with the clustering of, of homes and lots.
And Bill, you did this, the little.
I did. I didn't trust my grandson because you guys thought, thought his drawing was too crude.
What it is and I would even further take a step to let maybe her get a.
Oh, yeah. No, I like, I like Jaslin's a lot better.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, we, I mean, we met with, on this six business days ago. I think we've already made another big step towards the comprehension of it. I think we need another meeting to actually vote on it and have the text.
I agree. So in the, back to Bill's little, little one, I'm on the, where you did nine seventeen B.
Yes.
At minimum fifty percent of the adjusted tract yield. Did we mean to get rid of that next paragraph with the minimum required area of conservation land shall not be comprised?
More than zero percent of.
I don't know why it says zero. I thought there was something about it that we couldn't use X amount in conservation.
The zero was changed in a previous text amendment. I don't want to get into that, but if we want to change.
So, so you're good with us removing that and adjusted yield track, the way kind of he has it going is, is the way we need to move forward.
Uh, whatever, yeah, I think we can amend that however we need to make it clear to all of us.
But as you work with a, an applicant when he comes in, does that be pretty clear? If I'm coming in, I say, hey, I'm doing conservation. And you say, all right, fine. You take away your primary conservation, which we call adjusted gross yield. You then take half of what's left and you can build your homes on one half, the other stays conservation. I mean.
Yeah, I, I think we're more clearly defining what our expectations are looking for. And I, yeah, I think they'll look at this and be like, what does this mean? What does this mean? Uh, we could say, well, our board just talked about it. This means this primary open space is defined as this, shown in this section. And as far as a deliverable, here's your checklist. You have to have this to go to the planning board. So, yeah, I think, I think we're on the right track. Cool.
One other thing I just liked about, uh, secondary conservation land, which we have the tiering in here for, which I think is, is, uh, a good thing to have for, for the builder to reference, uh, what he's gonna, does, what he's gonna select as a secondary conservation land. Um, the other thing would be, and, and this might be a form of question. All the secondary conservation land does not have to be in the same or a continual piece of land. It could be, you could have some farmland over here that you might designate as secondary conservation, some, some fields over here. You know, not, not all in the same connected like, like this shows, and I'm not, I'm not picking up your things, but this shows, uh, all together. I just want to make sure they understand that tiering might not allow that to be all together. You know, so the houses might be spattered a little bit. You know, I think that's what we're really looking for in, in the conservation. Not to have fifty percent clear and fifty percent houses jammed on the other side.
But, yeah, that's exactly right. See, you know, we, um, and even, um, on some of the uh, conservation lands discussions we've had previous years ago, you know, we're trying to build off of what's surrounding the development. So if there's, there's some open space in another development, we want to connect those two things together, kind of create like a migration path, path for deer if necessary or.
They might have to all be together. They just might, they might have to all be together.
That you can give access where nobody's crossing private property, you can, you can pocket park it all around.
But we want folks to be creative. You know, we have, we've had instances where, you know, people see a development, they're like, why are all these houses clustered together? They just look so dense. They don't necessarily see the woods in the back and understand it's part of the same property. It's to their marketable benefit to spread some of that land out.
Cause we, we do say, yeah, here's our priority. However, in certain portions of town, priorities defined may be altered by the town in order to maximize the achievement of the goals of, of RCD, which addresses your point.
Yeah, and Greg, that you might want to have something but another neighborhood to, to make it useful for.
I mean, I think a lot of time a developer would rather have it all in one big clump.
Oh, yeah.
So they can get their roads and infrastructure there versus you may have a set over here and a set over here. That's going to require a little bit more roads and infrastructure, but that's, that's why we have a plan.
Yeah, my medium term goals is for, I mean, you guys have been asked to do above and beyond what ninety-nine percent of planning boards that need to do. I'll just be honest. You guys have a, a heavy burden on your guys' selves and your volunteers. And so what I would like to achieve out of this is that when we're having a sidewalk and charrette on a development like this and they're pushing all that open space aside, you guys can have an honest conversation with them and say, hey, we're the advisory board. We think you could design this differently. Here's my opinion on it. You could maybe move it around over here or our rules say you can disperse it this way. Here's our, our tiering of what you set aside, you know. Just reconsider before you go down this rabbit hole and spend tens of thousands of dollars on engineering. You know, we've tried to clearly define these terms for you for your benefit. Here's what they are.
Yeah, I think that, I think, I don't know how clear it was before, you know?
It had room for improvement.
You know, I certainly, I mean, you know, with everything being online and it not being really papered anymore, you know, I think having multiple, you know, gra, uh, graphics is, you know, the way to go. You can have, you know, you can have this one, you can have one where it's spattered about. You can have one where it, you know, shows the adjacent properties, so you're trying to keep things contiguous.
A lot of it, when, when we, when we do this charrette, Karen, you mentioned this, that you know, you're supposed to start with your clean sheet of paper. Here's my, here's my primary conservation land. And then, um, then you're looking at where I could put conservation and then I could lay in some houses and then I would lay in roads. Or the applicant comes, it's all laid out, here's what I've got and it's all right here. So I think that comes upon the people attending the charrette to more fully understand how it's supposed to work.
I think COVID, they're, they have to be suited to the fire.
Yeah.
Have them perform it like that.
Yeah.
And I, I will, uh, do a plug for the UNC School of Government. They had a great session last week that talked about kind of the stages of development that they go through. They've gone through so many meetings with attorneys and the banks and their pro forma and all these things to try to make this work out before they even talk to me. Um, you know, I don't want to discredit the amount of legwork they have to do to even get to the entitlement stage. So it's not like they come with a blank sheet of paper and they said, hey, guys, design a subdivision for me. They worked on this for months, months, months before they even get to the town. Um, and I'd be happy to share that with you guys, but, um, per that point, yeah, we're also not going to take any more of that, hey, we designed it, take it or leave it. Well, then we're going to leave it. Uh, we want to show our rules, our, our design for the benefit of everyone.
Question for you, Greg, uh, and to Steve's point, is there any benefit in adding verbiage about conservation? Land may be contiguous or non-contiguous in there because, uh, you know, from a builder's perspective, I get a soils report back and that says that I got some really bad livid soils out here still in a buildable area, but I've got, you know, I may want to designate this area and surround it with houses and let that be part of the conservation area. It kind of, it works, it can work in the developers, to the developer's advantage as well as preserving the, preserving it.
We do have some existing language on there that talked about, you know, connecting ecological corridors or connecting riparian corridors regardless of private ownership tracks. So we, we have some language in there already as well as some of the language from the Randall Art, you know, books and, and concepts that we have. Uh, I'm not sure if we need to restate it, but I, I do think as a policy, we need to let people know that that's important to us that, you know, uh, per everyone's point, like we don't want this over here and this over here. That's not the creativity we're looking for. That's not necessarily what's best for the land. That's not what's going to work with the topography.
Yeah, I think if, as long as this body does what we're supposed to do, I think we've got pretty much the tools that we, we need. We just have to be willing to, to do, to do our job.
Right.
The way that, you know, it's meant to be done.
I, I think we've got good marketing orders for Jaslin on some more visuals. So why, why, why write it out if we can show it?
Can I clarify with open space? It does not have to be like we've mentioned before, like a field or like usable, like it could be the woods, correct?
Yes, yeah. So a common example of that in a conventional subdivision is everybody's got their big acre lots. But we still set aside open space as kind of a perimeter buffer. So it's not conservation lands in perpetuity, but it's lands that we just never cut the trees down on because they create a visual barrier between the neighborhoods and it's good for everybody. Um, that's, that's a common approach.
So I guess we send this back to them for a little bit more tweaking of some visuals for us to look at. And then, uh, I think we, the only text thing we see is, is primary open space to basically copy and paste. And I mentioned, I knew you had wanted to, it might be off topic here. Did you not want to do something with taking view sheds out of primary?
Oh, it looks like we did. I don't see it in the primary.
In the.
It's in secondary.
Yeah, which is fine.
In the definitions?
Yeah. Is that a definition that's in there now?
That's just the definitions that Bill has got, has proposed definitions.
Yeah, I, I, I thought view shed is.
Going to be secondary, but we can move it out of that primary part. It doesn't get pulled out immediately as their primary part. Cause you're still going to view shades regardless, but it's going to be under the secondary.
Yeah, just to expand on that, I don't want some of these priorities of conservation lands that, that shouldn't be a deal breaker for a development. You don't want them to say, okay, I'm going to turn down your development because I don't think you're preserving view sets enough.
Yeah.
I think that's too subjective. Um, that's too, a little too arbitrary. You, if we're going to deny projects that should be based on our, our land use goals and our, you know, our future land use map or our comprehensive plan. These are just priorities for when you start drawing.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's view sheds from thoroughfares. And I always like to point out.
Well, it just says view sheds in the definition. On the last page, the definitions. You've got adjusted track yield or adjusted. Conservation land, open space, primary open space.
Okay, I was looking at the view shed priorities and.
Yeah, no, it's, I, everything stays there on that. Yeah, secondary stays.
Okay, alright.
Just a typo on the definition you had on that back page, I think.
Okay.
We had discussed about pulling that out of primary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so really the only text amendments here looks like, uh, some illustrations and then that primary open space, a copy and paste of, uh, conservation, the primary conservation, but just grid renamed. And then she works on, uh, illustrations.
Yep.
Similar to that, that, that work. Is there any more recommendations from you for staff to button up on that? And then maybe we see it again.
Just, uh, just to be clear though, I would hold on to Bill's definition of primary open space in conjunction with cutting and pasting the conservation.
You mean to leave that sentence at the end of it?
Yeah.
Alright, noted, we can do that. You know?
Yeah.
No, I think the bigger thing was making sure that we align with the streams, the, right. Gotcha.
So Karen, you got that input? Cause I am not taking any notes.
We'll have it recorded and I do think, um, this was a good discussion in giving staff direction. So this, we're not. I'm not going to hold you to the fire on the exact wording of any of these, of these sentences. But I think this gives staff adequate direction to give you another draft, a more complete draft next month.
And I think your checklist is spot on for sketch plans. Uh, I think to Steve's point, time to review, but I think from initial look. If you're getting house in order, that's perfect for the sketch plan. Alright, so we're good to move to, move to new business?
Yeah, well, let, let me make sure I got the process right. I sent, I sent a note in. You, you got it too on, um, exhibit two B where we talk about, we've got the applicant here today.
Oh, yeah, when we're talking about sans.
Who is, you know, going to seek approval for his gate entrance. Well, we now have that on, in exhibit two, two B, line twenty-three.
So does that mean it has to be that early?
That I think would be again, an unintended consequence that we're kind of seeing now. So I don't know that, that we would force them into a gate design that early.
Yeah, let me, let me restate that for everybody. So, you know, Bill said something today that said, you know, our new checklist says we want these kind of sign details upfront at the schematic plan stage, uh, whereas previously and, and in the case of today, we basically said, okay, tell us what your subdivision looks like. We'll approve it. We'll take it through planning board to get your entitlements. But you might not necessarily have all the design details down. We technically require you to come back to the planning board and show us what your signage for your development looks like. It's kind of redundant. It's not really anything we're going to deny, uh, but it does have the basis of providing the public an update on the subdivision. And letting them know exactly what they should anticipate when this development gets, uh, brought forward. We do have an applicant here today that can speak on that. I really don't think it's going to have any concern or any objections. Uh, in fact, we've looked at the gate design almost identically, just without the B.
I think he showed it in his, it's pretty similar to what his whole subdivision was based on, but I don't know what, uh.
And that's what I was saying, if it's in, wait, actually Giselle's handout has B twenty-three. It's in that section, which I think we, we've seen. And, um, if you go into UDO, it simply says before the final plat.
Right.
And, you know, are we, can we simplify that a little bit and take out the line before the, the, where it says before the final plat?
And.
Cause that way the, he's not going to have to come back here again unless there's some gigantic change. If it's some, I'll say limited changes, Greg takes care of that.
Yeah, I mean, and this is about as administrative as you can get in terms of sending it. You know, it does, this is kind of overkill to send it to you guys, to what the signage looks like. But, so we can tweak that. But I just got Bill's email today. It's not part of your packet. It's just some food for thought. You know, that maybe we don't have to go through this every time for every subdivision. We have a separate meeting for signage.
I would agree. If we see the concept of what they're doing at the beginning and then leave it to administrative at the back end of this.
Right.
Then, I don't want to be in the sign business. Then I don't want to be in the sign business. The uh. So with that said, I guess we are going to move to new business now. Discussion, possible consideration of an entry sign for Beckingham subdivision per section D nine one eight J. D. Subdivision entry and perimeter walls and entry monuments are not required to be of any specific height or style but are subject to review and approval. Planning board prior to the start of construction. So do you want to say a few things before we let Tom or do we? Well. How do we want to proceed? Because I know Tom came with a slideshow, which Tom likes to do very well.
I think it's self explanatory. I will let uh Mr. Waters introduce his.
I get this too.
Yeah.
Pretty self.
Mister Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the planning board and Weddington Town staff and community. I'm Tom Waters with Provident Land, and we're very excited to be developing the Beckingham community in Weddington. So tonight we have brought forth, it's really the same gated entry stone column monumentation that we presented initially. Then again, when we came before you for the cobblestone pavers approval. Um, it's really the same thing. So if you could show the picture, y'all know the site. Okay, there we go. So uh basically you gave approval for the cobblestone pavers that are represented in this picture. This is made up of stone columns all the way around the entrance. It's gonna have uh decorative lanterns on it. It'll have uh two gates, electronic automatic gates. And then I think there's another picture that shows the actual Beckingham sign. There it is in the middle there. So that's gonna be paying attention to any height and size restrictions where it says the word Beckingham. So I will say that uh conceptually, the stone and the columns, the cobblestone pavers, the curbing. The landscaped areas, those are pretty accurate on this rendering. The actual gates are gonna be a little more ornate than what's presented. It's gonna have some spikes on it. It has a little more decoration down at the bottom. It's not finished yet, the actual uh iron gates, if you will, but they're uh conceptually will look just like that. And then the logo has changed slightly. The uh, I guess the graphic of Beckingham is just a little bit different than that. The uh marketing folks used a different font, so that'll be coming forth. And then everything will be heavily landscaped. It'll be irrigated, lighting. Uh, that's basically it, and I'm here to answer any and all questions.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Planning board, have any questions for Mr. Waters?
I have no questions when you're, I I initially did, but then your presentation there, my question was, where's the call box? And that was in your presentation, so it shows where the call box is, and so you get cars backed up behind it. So I have no questions. I think it's a beautiful gate.
Thank you.
Entrance.
All right, there are questions for Mr. Waters. We had a want a discussion or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve if there's no other comments.
Do we do we need to do anything as far as lighting goes with it, uh just to make sure that. It. Conforms to our our lighting specifications.
Yeah, just, yeah, for clarification, you you they can't be internally lit. They need to be externally lit. So basically, they need to have a light shine on. The signage, not have it glowing with LEDs or or neon or anything behind it, so.
I'm I'm assuming we're, I'm assuming we're accepting the design, not the lighting, that the lighting has to meet the town's lighting ordinance. Is that?
Yeah, I would say that it needs to meet the town's ordinance regardless, so it's, we're not granting a waiver to have it not meet rules.
Yeah.
It's gotta be externally lit regardless.
Got a second, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, that concludes our new business. Moving to update from town planner.
Thanks for your patience. Uh, members of the board, uh so at the November meeting. Uh, we did have one subdivision that was up for a vote. That applicant uh actually contacted staff. And withdrew their application. So if you guys know, but that was the project on Forest Lawn, uh that application. For twelve homes was withdrawn, so the town council did not take any action on that. It was not uh discussed.
Did they say why?
Uh, they declined to discuss why. Um, staff has worked on finding that out.
Ooh, what might not.
Uh, but they they withdrew and they do not intend to reconsider the item at this time. That was that was stated in their email. Um, so basically, no planning items were discussed at that meeting. Um. Coming up. The end of this month or next month um would be the Aria subdivision would go to town council. Uh, in December, just to say that they're allowed to be on wells rather than public water, which you guys have already discussed and recommended. And then uh the next item that would go before you guys, probably this December, will be the Toll Brothers Morris Farm. Development, which is located on Weddington Matthews Road. Uh, that has not been formally applied for. That should be applied for uh by requirement by the end of this week. Uh, but I do anticipate that coming before this board in December, which we meet prior to Christmas. I know it's still a busy time for everyone. I'm with the holidays, uh but we will have a scheduled meeting in December, particularly if that item is on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Greg. We'll open it up to uh board member comments. Uh, we'll start it. Bill's in.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I hope you enjoy the holidays, time with your family. We all have so much to be thankful for. And uh, that's it. Of course, the annual thank you staff for all you do. I mean, that's kind of a given.
I like on that. Enjoy Thanksgiving.
So thank you everyone for attending tonight and uh happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, same. Happy Thanksgiving. Thanks, everybody for coming. Um, reminder that our tree lighting is Friday.
That's right.
Five thirty. And uh, hope everybody will come. And uh, I don't know what font you chose for the new sign, but I think it was probably a good idea.
Uh, I appreciate staff. Um, you make everything easier for us. I appreciate the work that. Uh, everybody did around the table. Um, thank you to everyone who came out, applicants and. Um, you know, town alike and uh happy Thanksgiving to everyone and. Yeah, let's come to uh come to tree lighting and make it a festive event.
All right. Well, I I agree with everyone, share the same sentiments. Thanks, staff. As always, y'all do a great job. Pleasure to have you on board. Looking forward to. More work. So uh, happy Thanksgiving and Tree Lighting Friday. See y'all there. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.